Good evening. I'd like to call the July 2th Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is 6:02. I would like to welcome you to our almost-finished redecorated chambers. So, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm excited.
Looks very nice.
I think they're doing a great job. So, can we start, please, with the invocation and the pledge if we'll all rise?
This evening's invocation begins with a brief history of the Declaration of Independence. A thirty-three-year-old Virginian by the name of Thomas Jefferson was voted to head the committee that was charged with drafting a Declaration of Independence from England, which would then be voted on by the Continental Congress. The committee's members included Benjamin Franklin, Robert Livingston, Robert Sherman, and John Adams, and after a meeting appointed Jefferson and Adams to write the document. Jefferson and Adams then subsequently met, and Jefferson proposed that Adams make the draft. Adams responded with three reasons why it would be Jefferson who should do it, including that Adams felt Jefferson could write ten times better than he. Jefferson accepted and began his work on June 11, 1776. What we tend to forget is that it was actually on this date, July 2, 243 years ago, that the Continental Congress actually voted for independence from King George III and England. They then spent the next two days refining Jefferson's work before releasing it to the public on July 4, 1776. So today holds a special place in our history as we remember and honor the courageous vote and action by the Continental Congress and the path that they set upon that would change our country and our world forever. So, please join me in prayer if you're willing. Heavenly Father, we come with grateful hearts for this great country, for our founding leaders who took bold and decisive steps in a time of great uncertainty and at great personal risk. We are grateful for the foundation of principles that the Declaration of Independence laid out, and that we have become a beacon of light to the world for these two centuries. How blessed are we to be a part of this great nation. Help us to understand and remember the responsibilities that come with this blessing, and to carry forward a vision for a better country, a better world for all of our future generations. Father, we humbly ask for your continued blessings on the United States of America and all of its great people. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item of business is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of Tuesday, June 4.
I have approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will go on to public to be heard, excluding any public hearing items. So if anybody wishes to address the commission, now's the time to do it.
Public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Commissioner, fellow commissioners, my name is Craig Bridgers, and I'm the senior pastor at the Crossing Community Church. We have locations on Endrio Road as well as Oleander Avenue. It's the Endrio Road location that I make reference to this evening. It's concerning the widening of the County Road 614, State Road 614, Endrio Road from west of I-95 up to Emerson, and then it goes to two lanes, and then at Fort Pierce Boulevard it moves back into a four-lane section, which I agree, it's a beautiful improvement there. My concern is the two-lane stretch that seems that I can get no answer on when that is going to be completed. I've had several conversations with people within the state Department of Transportation. They have given me some information, not very clear. I've spoken with Senator Harrell's office, State Representative Graul, and they've all suggested, and a personal friend in Tallahassee, suggested that I first come to the county commissioners and get your support about my concerns. I have spoken with our district commissioner, Kathy Townsend. She's been informed of me being here this evening, and I have her support in what I'm asking. From my understanding, this comes from the TVC Comprehensive plan that has been written for that area approximately seventeen, eighteen years ago, and it was about the idea from new urbanism that it would encourage alternative routes and control speeding. I've been in that area nineteen years. I have no idea what alternative routes this traffic is going to go. Johnson Road, that's not good. Neither would be Emerson. And so, I know as well as you, when we expand a road such as that, we know that we're going to have more traffic and more speed. It says forty-five. I've seen the Sheriff's Department out there many times slowing people down and things of that nature. So what I'm basically asking is, I know that there is going to be future improvements and businesses building there. We house the local community discussion there at our facilities on Endrio when Cumberland Farms was interested in moving in at the northwest intersection of Kings and Endrio, in which they've certainly withdrawn at this point. However, in the month of June, 711 has now applied for that, and so it looks like another business is going to be coming in there. I understand at the Kings Highway, I'm sorry, Endrio and 995, there is a large housing development that has been discussed. I'm here tonight to ask for your support, as I have from Kathy Townsend, that we might resolve this issue sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Board. How you doing today?
Good evening.
I am here in support of Sheraton Plaza. I grew up in that.
And you are, sir?
My name is, ooh, Kim Johnson.
Thank you.
But I'm here in support of Sheraton Plaza. We decided to come to the meeting tonight, and I'm grateful because I grew up in this community. I love the people that grew up in this community, and they're something special that they're going to do, and I appreciate the community, and I appreciate you all as well. There's nothing like community in St. Lucie County. And when you can begin to get pockets of commitment from the community, that's when you change the community. So I want to be grateful and thankful to Mr. Robin Bino, along with the HOA out there. They're doing a great job. They're having meetings consistently. They have an involvement in the community, and that's what we want to see. We want to see community involvement in the community. We want to see parent involvement at the school, and we want to see government involvement to provide the underlay of foundation to support everything that we do. And I just want to say thank you for your service, thank you for your time, and hold on to the special. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robin Bino. I'm the president of the Sheraton Plaza Community Association, and I have a few members here with me also. And we would like to speak on behalf of the next item issue as far as what's going to take place. Terry, Pam, and my wife Vicki. We'll be brief.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson and fellow chairmen, commissioner, I'm sorry. My name is Ela Terry Jones. I'm a member of Sheraton Plaza since 1977. Roy McGriff and Janice McGriff has built a pillar of our community ever since I've been there and before. Roy McGriff was my first football coach. I met his wife in middle school. I was in seventh grade. I would just like to say it's an honor and a pleasure that you all have taken on this task, do what you have said you would do in renaming our park in honor of Coach McGriff and Ms. Janice McGriff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not sure yet.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Carruthers, and I grew up in Sheraton Plaza since 1970, and my parents were one of the original owners. My father still resides there. And I first met Ms. McGriff at the age of five, when homes were still being built out there. And my parents' home is about four homes down the road from Ms. McGriff's parents, Mr. and Mrs. Johnson. And Ms. McGriff and Mr. McGriff were walking through the community when there was sand and sidewalks still being installed, and they were asking us, "Where's your parents?" And at that time, they were starting to organize the Sheraton Plaza Homeowners Association. So, growing up there, both the McGriffs have been a fixture not only in Sheraton Plaza, but Westwood High School. They both were part of the boosters, the original boosters that started in the class of 1978 and '79, the first year of a high school there. And not only were they involved in the athleticism of all the students that attended Westwood High School, but they were also involved in the community students. Every year, they opened up their block to a community block party in Sheraton Plaza. And I recall as a senior, we had a senior banquet that was organized by the Sheraton Plaza Homeowners Association for the seniors there. And it was equipped with a program dinner at the Lincoln Park Recreation Center, and all of the seniors, we were there year after year to tell what we were going to do after high school. So as a lifetime educator, both Mr. and Mrs. McGriff, they've invested not only in Sheraton Plaza, not only in Fort Pierce Westwood High School, but they've invested in the lives of kids, students, adults throughout the Fort Pierce community. So it is only befitting that that name of Sheraton Plaza Park, which I am glad to say that I was the first park director in the summer of 1983, when it was established and nothing was out there but my father's truck and the games and the balls and equipments that I had to have on the back of that truck, and I had a chair. Nothing else was out there, but it was important for that park to exist, and the McGriffs have been there as a fixture. So, I'm in support of it, and the community is in support of it. And again, their lives have been a labor of love, not only for that community, but throughout. And as a testament to their involvement and athleticism of the community, Mr. McGriff and Ms. McGriff are, you know, they imparted into two, not one, but two, Major League Baseball players, one being their own son and the other being their nephew. And they both came out of Sheraton Plaza, where the nephew came to visit the grandparents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Bino, and when I first met Ms. McGriff, I extended my hand for her to shake, and she would not shake my hand. She said, "No, baby, we don't shake hands, we do hugs." So, I have known Ms. McGriff long, only about a year. Ms. McGriff is still active in the community. She helps out at community yard sales. She can't get around as much as she used to, but she'll set up her table, and she'll sit there, and she'll collect monies. She still comes to all of the meetings that she can make it when she's feeling well and she's not under the weather. Ms. McGriff, we'd just like to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you for so much, for all you've given and all that you've done for Sheraton Plaza. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank the commissioners, each and every one of you, for your timeliness and support in this effort, and I'm grateful for all of you guys, and thank you so much. Turn it back over to the...
Anybody else wishing to approach the board? Okay. So we need an approval on the resolution, rename?
Letter reading.
I'm sorry?
Read it into the...
I was getting there. They always try to jump the gun. Madam Clerk, they told me you have to read first.
Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. In the early 1980s, the McGriffs were catalysts behind the changes that were happening in Sheraton Plaza. The McGriff's tireless efforts led to the creation of the park, the entrance signage, and neighbor streetlights that the Sheraton Plaza community enjoys today. The McGriff's dedication to the community was unprecedented when Mrs. McGriff wrote then Commissioner Green, Governor Graham, and President Ronald Reagan on behalf of the children of Sheraton Plaza to establish a place to play. Due to the untiring dedication of Roy and Janice McGriff to St. Lucie County Sheraton Plaza Park, this board believes that a tribute should be given in their honor. Now, therefore, be it resolved, in a meeting assembled the second day of July 2019, the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, does hereby honor Roy and Janice McGriff for their many contributions to St. Lucie County Sheraton Plaza Park by dedicating and renaming the park as the Roy and Janice McGriff Park at Sheraton Plaza in St. Lucie County, Florida. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, that this board does hereby recognize and appreciate the passion and efforts of Roy and Janice McGriff in St. Lucie County, Florida, passed and duly adopted the second day of July 2019.
Okay, now it's my turn. We haven't approved this yet. Okay, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair, move, approval.
Thank you. And a second? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, guess what? You have a park! You can, but let me say real quickly, it is an honor, after listening to all those accolades about you, for all that you have done for this community over the years. I am proud to present you with a proclamation and the resolution. Thank you so much. And yes, now you may have your time.
Well, hello, everyone. This is really a surprise. I got in, and my daughter kept telling me to turn to this page. I really didn't see it, you know, and the girl just kept telling me to turn over here and turn over here, you know, and I did. Finally, I saw. You know what I'm saying to myself? But I would like to thank everyone, and because I've worked my thirty-five years in accounting with my students, and I've retired twenty-two years, and I'm just so grateful and thankful to God that I have been able to reach this moment in my life. I remember my husband being there with me, and we really did what we could together, and along with the others who were members of Sheraton Plaza. So again, I'd like to thank you, and this is already etched into my heart, believe me. So thank you again. I appreciate Sheraton Plaza, Robin, and all of the ones that had a moment of this wife and all. Thank you again. I won't hold up in more time, but thank you very much.
Madam Chair, while you're taking a picture, Mrs. McGriff? Mrs. McGriff?
I'm sorry.
Hi there. I'd like to reflect and send Commissioner Denny Green's best. He still has the barber shop, and he wasn't able to come tonight, but he sends his best, and congratulations.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Go get your camera.
Fred McGriff? Actually, the base.
Yeah?
Being a Yankee fan, I knew who Fred McGriff was.
Sweet lady.
Very touching moment.
They're going to bring them out.
We might want to...
Can we get you guys to stand? Yeah, so we can kind of get everybody...
Ain't nobody see you back there.
Thank you so much.
And Madam Chair, while you're making your way back, I'd like to thank the commission for their support in having this happen. You can hear from the proclamation how special Mrs. McGriff is and was in the early days, and for a community to rally around and to take ownership of their community, to make it a better place, is always commendable, and we're grateful for all of what you're doing. And Mr. Bino, your leadership has shown itself over the last several years, and we thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you again. I want to, not to be remiss, I want to go back to public to be heard. I would like to refer the pastor to our engineer, Don West. Don, if you can get with him and just get a number or something so that we can see if we can address his issues, okay? Don, if you'll put your hand up for him.
Yes, I should say that the staff, the county staff, has been incredible in their assistance. I can tell you, I've spoken with Donald West, Carol Wood, Chris McCrane, and then with DOT, Vanita Ciani, and they've all been extremely helpful to me. So thank you for that.
Okay, he will be the one that gives you the direction. Thank you. Okay, and now we have some pretty amazing young people here for a presentation. These people are from the SWAT team, and when I mentioned it this morning at a gathering I was at, I was asked which law enforcement SWAT was coming in and what our issues were that we needed SWAT. So, I'm really pleased to have you. SWAT is Students Working Against Tobacco, and we have Nicholas and Sebastian Suarez, who is Tobacco-Free Partnership of St. Lucie, and members Kiara Figueroa, if you would like to come up and do your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Kiara Figueroa. I was president of the Poissons-Lucie SWAT Club and also a member of the St. Lucie SWAT chapter. SWAT is a youth-led movement working to mobilize, educate, and equip Florida youth to show big tobacco's true colors since 1999. So to our understanding, nine out of ten smokers start smoking by the age of eighteen, and tobacco companies use many marketing and advertising tools specifically at retail stores that sell their products. Tobacco companies also target low-income minority communities with point-of-sale marketing. In 2015, the tobacco industry spent $34.9 billion just on marketing. Over 32,000 Floridians die from smoking-related illnesses each year, and tobacco use remains the leading cause of many preventable deaths. More cigarettes are sold in convenience stores than any other store, and more than two-thirds of teenagers visit a convenience store once a week. So, the tobacco industry continues to evolve, which we now have the e-SIC epidemic. They contain the addictive agent nicotine and supply many deadly chemicals with over 15,500 flavors, and we're still counting with the amount of flavors. In 2018, the Florida Youth Tobacco Survey showed that 25% of Florida high school students reported current use of electronic vaping. That's 58% higher compared to 2017, which is also equivalent to one in four high schoolers. SWAT has launched a campaign called Not a Lab Rat to address the facts of the e-SICS. We have collected over 1,200 statements of youth declaring that they are not lab rats. And now, Sebastian, we'll talk about what we're doing to do about it.
Thank you for that fantastic introduction, Kiara. It's always a pleasure to be here. So, my name is Sebastian Suarez. I'm a current board member for the St. Lucie Tobacco-Free Partnership, and I'm a SWAT alumni of seven years, and I served on the statewide youth advocacy board for three of those. So, Kiara mentioned point-of-sale, and when we say point-of-sale, we're referring to marketing and promoting tobacco products in retail environments, such as gas stations, convenience stores, and other retail outlets. So, over the past decade, the partnership and SWAT have conducted numerous strategy activities to investigate the point-of-sale landscape in St. Lucie County, and we've accomplished a reduction of youth access initiation and influence at tobacco at corner stores. So, I believe we're supposed to have a presentation, but for the sake of it, I'll just read to you the data. So, we've had 126 cases of community outreach and mobilization, an example that would So we've had 126 cases of community outreach and mobilization, an example that would be visiting tobacco retail stores. We've had 139 cases of monitoring and assessments, such as... I would like that... Yes, thank you. One second, we're actually gonna pull up the PowerPoint presentation, but I'll continue on. So we've had 139 cases of monitoring and assessments, which are store compliance checks and assessments on product placement, price, and promotions of tobacco products in those stores. We've had 96 cases of presentations and educating decision-makers, and we've had about 30 cases of national tobacco control observances, where we head out into the community and we educate the community and the public during Great American Smokeout, Kick Butts Day, et cetera. So all of these mentioned strategy activities have resulted in obtaining a product placement ordinance locally to keep tobacco behind the counter, flavored tobacco resolutions to restrict flavors that clearly target youth, reduce tobacco advertising, and proclamations during national tobacco control observances. So this data and all the achievements we've thankfully had over the past decade have opened the doors for considerations, which my brother and colleague Nicholas will now speak to you about.
Thank you very much, Sebastian. And Commissioners and Board, thank you again for taking the time to hear us out tonight. Like my brother, I also serve as a board member of the Tobacco-Free Partnership of St. Lucie County, and I was a SWAT member for six to seven years. So what's next? We need and will continue to garner letters of support for strengthening tobacco retail licensing and work with local retailers to help educate them to stay in compliance with tobacco regulation and compliance checks. We will also educate the community about tobacco's influence in St. Lucie County, continue to collaborate and partner with those who share the same goal of health retail environments. And lastly, as a follow-up to this presentation, schedule meetings to continue the same conversation afterwards. Limiting tobacco industry product presence in the retail environment is a core control strategy. An effective way to implement this strategy is through strengthening tobacco retail licensing laws. These laws can be an effective tool in reducing the number, location, density, and other types of tobacco retail outlets. They also serve to limit point-of-sale advertising, like my brother mentioned, and product placement, and require retailers to comply with other tobacco control measures. Our goal, and an important one at that, is to continue to work together with the Commission and with others to prevent youth and young adults from using tobacco and help those who start using tobacco to quit. In doing so, we will help our community of young people live longer and healthier lives than the generation who came before them. We do have packets for you all, which include info in regards to the consideration of tobacco retail licensing laws...
Perfect.
...and to previous victories in Alachua County. Again, thank you for your time. We really do appreciate it.
Good job. Appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you so much. I do have a question. Are you reaching out now into the vaping community for the younger, you know, your teens?
Yeah, so like my brother and Kiara mentioned, e-cigarettes, vaping, and Jules have been a big epidemic, pandemic here. And we do have a tobacco specialist, and we do have more facts on that later, and that we can get back to you on that after. They're all in the packets as well. But needless to say, it is becoming, it has and will be a big issue, but we are tackling it, yes.
Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Good job. So for all of you people in the audience, that's a big part of our future. So when people talk about the kids nowadays, and sometimes they're not so complimentary, we need to remember how many fabulous kids we really do have here, so, thank you. Go on to the consent agenda. Anyone who... We have one item to be pulled. Eight F1.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, that's pulled prior to the meeting and will be brought back to you at a later date.
Okay. I have an older agenda then. Can I have a...
Madam Chair, I need to pull eight H1 for a separate vote, and for the record, to show that I will be abstaining from that vote.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without eight H1?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chair, move approval of eight H1?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that Commissioner Hutchinson has abstained from that vote. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are two county attorney items. Both are going to be handled by property acquisition manager Joanne Riley.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Joanne Riley, property acquisition manager. Item 9A1 is a public hearing to abandon a portion of Heron Avenue and Chippewa Avenue as shown in red on your monitors. The Property Acquisition Division received a petition for abandonment from Northside Worship Center requesting an abandonment of these two right-of-ways that were recorded on the plat of St. Lucie Plaza Unit 1 subdivision, recorded in Plat Book 5, page 57 of the public records of St. Lucie County. Both Heron and Chippewa are unopened and unmaintained 54-foot county rights of way. A notice of intent to advertise was published on March 15th and also on March 22nd of 2019, and no objections were received. On June 4th of 2019, this board approved permission to advertise tonight's public hearing. On June 12th of 2019, a notice of public hearing was advertised in the St. Lucie News Tribune, and property owners within 500 feet were notified, and no objections were received. All relevant public utilities had been notified. Fort Pierce Utilities Authority has stated that they are willing to consent to the abandonment if the property owners grant an easement in favor of the Fort Pierce Utilities Authority. If the Board of County Commissioners recommends approval to the Northside Worship Church, they will have 45 days to grant this easement in favor of FPUA, or the board will rescind approval of the abandonment. County staff has reviewed the petition to abandon a portion of Heron and a portion of County staff is unable at this time to recommend abandonment of Chippewa, which would be the right-of-way shown in red on your monitors, as if we were to abandon that property owner, we would in fact landlock a property owner. County staff has no objections to the proposed abandonment for a portion of Heron Avenue as shown in yellow on your monitor. Staff would request that the board waive the privilege fee for the abandonment of Heron. The right-of-way was dedicated to the public on the plat of St. Lucie Plaza Unit 1 in October of 1925. The right-of-way is unopened and unmaintained. Staff recommends that the board approve Resolution Number 2019127, abandoning a portion of Heron Avenue lying between St. Lucie Boulevard and Industrial Avenue 1. Instruct staff to publish the final notice of abandements and record the resolutions and the proof of publications in the public record. I am available to answer any questions that the board may have, along with representatives from Northside Worship Church.
Any comment, questions? This item requires a public hearing. I will open up the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on item A1, resolution to abandon the portion of Heron Avenue?
Yes, ma'am.
Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. What is the wish of the board?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mr. McIntyre, we'll go on to the second public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is also a public hearing, as you indicated, and also property acquisition manager Joanne Riley will be presenting this item.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, item 9A2 is a public hearing to declare 809 North 9th Street in Fort Pierce surplus property. This property is shown on your monitors. St. Lucie County has owned this location since January 21st of 1954. In the past, the county has leased this property to various organizations, including the Helping Hands Neighbors to provide services to local senior citizens, and also to the St. Lucie County Agape Senior Recreational Center to operate a senior daycare center. The county has determined it no longer has a need for this property. On June 4th of 2019, the Board of County Commissioners approved permission to advertise tonight's public hearing. On June 12th of 2019, county staff published a notice of intent in the St. Lucie News Tribune. No objections have been received by county staff, either via email or regular mail. Staff would recommend that the board declare 809 North 9th Street surplus property and direct staff to dispose of the parcel pursuant to ordinance number 11-014. I am available to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions, comments from the board? This item also requires a public hearing. I will open the item to declare 809 North 9th Street surplus property. And I see we have the public coming to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. We do have some items to be entered. First of all, I want to thank you all. You've received all these documents electronically, but we wanted to provide them for you here as well. I come on the behalf of the Zora Neale Hurston Florida Education Foundation, and on June 14th, we submitted a letter to the Commissioners to request for this property to be transferred.
Sure.
Yes.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Marvin Hobson.
Thank you.
So sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes. So yes, we request that this property be transferred to the Zora Neale Hurston Florida Education Foundation. And also in this packet, you'll find some letters of support from various organizations, some being the Allegheny Franciscan Ministries, representatives from the House of Representatives, and so on, and so on. We also decided to include upon your request also a business plan for how this property will be used. It will have a multi-use, multi-usage, and so you have that information there as well. And we also wanted to provide you the history, because it was kind of interesting, really interesting for us to learn about this property and how it was acquired. So you have all that information there for you. I don't know if anyone else from our organization may have any other comments?
Madam Chair, Mr. Hobson?
Yes.
My understanding, you spent a little time at IRSC, and you have a program in which you teach, and this is near and dear to your heart from a historic standpoint, is that right?
Very much so. So since Zora Neale Hurston died in this building, we take or have brought students to this location every single semester for, I'd say, the past seven or eight years. So we want the students to learn about Fort Pierce and the history of Fort Pierce during Fort Pierce's heyday of the 50s and 60s, which is when Zora Neale Hurston was here. And of course, this correlates with their understanding of the literature that we're trying to teach them in the classroom. So it's a win-win for us at the college, and this is just an added benefit for the foundation as well.
You talked about history, so I'm here. The importance of this movement is not just for...
Ms. Marjorie?
Yes, Marjorie.
We know who you are, but for the record...
Marjorie Harrell.
Thank you.
Now, Harrell. It was Harrell until I went to North Carolina, and there's the Harrell's deal. No, we got our own city in North Carolina. The importance of restoring this property and keeping it open for the rest of the life of St. Lucie County, Fort Pierce, and the Lincoln Park community is that people come from all around the world. They are on a waiting list to come and present at festivals. We had festivals, and our first festival will be renewed in 2020. But Marvin is our lifetime president. As long as he live, we will be wearing him. And that's because he knows how to make things work, how to handle them. So he is really, his wife wants me to stop calling so much, and after tonight, I will give them a break during the summer, and then I'll start calling again. But you just don't know how happy this makes me. When I leave out of here, I know I'm gonna cry, 'cause I'm like you, Chris, I cry.
Known for something.
But I am just so grateful, and you don't know, this is not for us. This is for Fort Pierce, for the Lincoln Park community, for St. Lucie County, and the state of Florida, and the United States. 'Cause we are the only city that has all these buildings that Zora touched and walked in, and people come from around the world. Alice Walker came and found a grave and put a, what you call that thing? A tombstone. We didn't even know who she was, but she told us who she was, and she started the Zora movement all over again. So you, St. Lucie County, you have a fountain here, fountain of knowledge, of just a wealth of education, and it will bring so many people in for tourist development. So we win every way, and we have so many organizations that are saying, hurry up and let's get going. They wanted it finished by June, but we won't be through by June, but we will be, hopefully, by the end of the summer. I want to thank you very much, and we're gonna be able to do it on our own. We ain't gonna ask you for no money. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any further questions?
I just wondered whether you knew you were the lifetime president of the organization?
Now we know, right?
Yes, and it's public.
And it's on the record.
It is videoed forever, so you may not ever get out of it.
Thank you. Well, we'll see what we can do about that.
Thank you so much.
You'll talk to your wife about that.
I know, right? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Commissioner of the Board, Pamela Carruthers, this time as representation of Lincoln Park Main Street. And the Zora House or 809 North 9th Street, it is an asset that is within the Lincoln Park District that is historic in nature, and it is one of a number of assets that, along our historic tour that we provide, is one of those locations that is outlined and tells the story that Zora spent her last few months in that particular place, as well as some of the other assets that Marjorie Harrell had did mention, because we have the old Chronicle Building that's located on Avenue D 1523 Avenue D. We have the Lincoln Park Academy where Zora Neale Hurston was a teacher, her home on Avenue L, and the marvelous grave site that in 1973, as author Tony Morrison came along and went looking for Zora. So those assets, coupled with the other assets that accompany St. Lucie County and that are in the city of Fort Pierce, is just an addition to what the citrus town, what this city has to offer to everybody. So Lincoln Park Main Street is in support of that committee, and we will work together with them to do whatever needs to take place, so that that is another asset that is held in high esteem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is a beginning of a process. Mr. Tipton, do you want to share how that unfolds?
I'd like to close publicly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To be...
I didn't know if somebody... Okay.
Do we have anyone else that wishes to address the board on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Tipton?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Commissioner Sodowsky, the process, as you indicated, is a two-step process. So this evening, the board is declaring or making the decision to declare this property surplus. That is the agenda item before you. It is, it is, sounds like it's the board intent to go ahead and transfer this property to this nonprofit. We are happy to bring that back to you. And we can do that on the 16th of July, as we can prepare that and go ahead and make that happen. Just by way of background too, you know, we started looking at this particular facility about two years ago, and we started looking at it for a Veterans Assistance Center. And what we found was that the property needed a bunch of renovations for that particular purpose. And we were going to have to invest a lot more money in it that it was actually worth. And then at the end of the day, we still wouldn't have a facility that was really built for the purpose we were trying to achieve. And so that's what led us down this path. There is historical significance. And I think, as you've heard this evening and as the board has concurred with it, that's important to preserve. So if the board moves forward and declares the surplus, we will bring forward a resolution to transfer this property to the foundation. And that will be hopefully at the next meeting if we can get all the paperwork in order.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, Marjorie made a joke when she came up here and she said, you know, talked about the history and she was here. She knew Zora, so that's important to note. I'd like to also kind of reflect back. Lynda Henderson, back when I first came on board, was a driving force of the Zora Neale Foundation back then. And others, Brenda Cooper and her daughter have been driving this issue. And there's the connection to the Highwaymen and Beanie Backus. So the history of that entire community is all wrapped up with Zora and the Highwaymen and Beanie. And that's so rich in St. Lucy County and the city of Fort Pierce. So if there's, I would be proud if I could to make the motion to approve this item.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You'll be back on July 16th, right?
And staff will move forward?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I am sure we'll see you all back here on the 16th. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next one's a public hearing as well. Am I right there?
Yes.
So next item is a public hearing as well. This is the Transit Development Plan, major update.
Hope everything works. I don't know if this is on, that's okay. I can speak loud enough. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Diana Waslawski, Director, Community Services. While they're getting set up, I just wanted to take a brief moment to thank the transit staff, Mariah Dekel, Claudia Sessions, and Kathy Patagno for all their hard work that they have done over the past 18 months in preparing this report. Their in-house work substantially reduced the cost of consulting fees and saved thousands of dollars in cost preparations for this major update that is due every five years. So I'd like now to turn this agenda item over to the County Transit Manager, Mariah Dekel, and also Mr. Richard Drier, who's with Tyndale Oliver.
Thank you, Diana. Thank you very much. I'm going to be brief. We have about 20 slides to take you through. But I also wanted to recognize the dedicated staff members. So we were able to pull this together in-house. Typically, it's consulted out. But Tyndale Oliver helped with a portion of the technical assistance on the plan. So Kathy Patagno, Marcia Ladue with the St. Lucet TPO, and David Rodriguez with Community Transit have been phenomenal. So we really feel like we had the dream team set up here. And this updated strategic plan demonstrates a commitment to furthering the board's mission and strategy map. We know that there is a quantifiable value to the community through enhanced mobility options. And study after study demonstrates that where public transportation goes, community grows. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Richard. He's going to elaborate on the projects that we put together and the planning methodology behind it. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you. As mentioned, my name is, oop, moving. Richard Drier with Tyndale Oliver. Was 23 years with DOT and then have been 13 years with Tyndale Oliver. And most all of that has been in transit. So I've been around a while and pretty tough skin if you need to use it or whatever. But anyway, we'll move forward. What we want to do tonight is let you know what TDP is, make sure we're all on the same page about that. The key elements that are included in that, how we did the public outreach for this plan, which was mostly done by staff, obviously. Goals and objectives that have been identified, the improved priorities, and then the 10-year plan and how we put the options together for that. And then just what happens after this. There we go. So what is a TDP? In this case, we have it branded as Bus Plus. The previous one had a brand. We build on that so that we continue the potential for growth and recognition of the system more readily throughout the community. It is a 10-year strategic plan. It looks at where we're at today, where we need to be in the future, and then outlines strategies to get there. And that's what a strategic plan is designed to do. And DOT does require this to be eligible for your public transit block grant funds every year. You do an update every five years. The last one was done in, well, five years ago from now, 2014. This is due by September 1st to DOT, and it covers fiscal years 20 through 29. A TDP is reflective of what is going on in the community. It reflects the community's vision, where it should be going in transit. It identifies funded needs as well as unfunded needs. And I'll explain a little bit more about that in the future. Since it is an urban transit system and there's FTA, Federal Transit Administration requirements and oversight, there are some other things that impact this other than just state requirements like Title VI and stuff like that. So you'll see some of that sprinkled out through here. Collaborative process in that, as you mentioned, the TPO was involved. It's involved with the community development. It's involved with the different municipalities that are in this community. And it looks at all of their vision, their goals, and their needs as well. And then it helps set priorities for you in the future. There are several key elements that are required by the Department of Transportation, by statute and then administrative code. Some of those are a robust public outreach program. Baseline conditions, and that's, again, to know where you're at, you have to go ahead and analyze and find out where you're at. So that's baseline conditions and evaluation of services that are currently there. Then there's the needs assessment, which helps us identify where we want to go. And then you put together goals, objectives to help you get there and identify the strategies. And then there's the resource assessment. How do you use the resources that are available to get there? And then the last thing is putting together a plan. It's phased and implemented over the 10-year plan, horizon of the plan. Change the format here a little bit. The public outreach, I want to kind of outline a little bit of that, why a robust outreach is required. The department really doesn't outline what that means. They leave that to the local areas. And in this case, there was two phases. The first phase really identifies needs. It's really looking at where are we at today and how are we not meeting the needs? What community outreach is needed and where do the services need to go? We use focus groups. We had some, what we call grassroots. And that's kind of just going where people are, whether it's events, activities at the library or at a mall. And we did a lot of surveys. There was actually two surveys in Phase One. One of your riders, why they're on board. And another one for non-writers, public survey. It's done with public outreach through the public outreach, but also online. Then Phase Two is later in the process. And it really helps us after we've identified the needs by prioritizing those needs and helping us identify from the public standpoint, what would be more effective for helping to meet the needs. Also wanted to mention, as Mariah mentioned, there were several people involved. But there was also a kind of an oversight or advisory committee, review committee, that reviewed all of our efforts, put together recommendations, and gave the guidance and direction for the plan it was going through. And that was made up of local staff and including those in the neighboring communities, counties as well, so. Okay. Just kind of quickly, an outreach. Those who were directly provided input count nearly 900 people through surveys, being active in the outreach activities, focus groups, and so on. And that doesn't include all those that were reached through Facebook and other social media, as well as just heard the information, was educated a little bit. And these are the only ones that actually gave feedback that we heard from. The group, as they were working on this with the county and the TPO, put together some targets for being able to judge how well and how effective the public outreach was. And we'd like to say that we met all of the targets. We were close on a couple of them in Phase Two, but we exceeded them in Phase One. So overall, we had met them all. But where we were a little bit short was in some of the grassroots efforts of the attendees, didn't quite reach 25 per event in Phase Two. And we didn't quite get as many people there, obviously, input as we would like. But other than that, everything exceeded those measures. From all of that public outreach, and we're spending a little time on it because it is very important, and you'll see as we move forward how important. There were really six key themes we identified. The public would like to see and felt that there was needs to increase bus frequency of the existing service, as well as expand some of those service hours. Help fill some of those last mile, first mile gaps. In other words, where there's an end or a stop. How do we get there from our home or where we want to go? Express services to get us to work quicker and other places we might want to go quicker. Improve bus stop accessibility. So even if we have a stop, sometimes it's not the easiest to use. So let us improve that accessibility and the comfort. And then expand service into some new areas where we're currently not covering. And we'll show you how those play out. As I mentioned, the public involvement is used from the beginning through the end of the process. As a matter of fact, looking at community goals and objectives and weighing them through those key themes are important in developing the system goals and objectives based on community goals and objectives as well. And here's a list of those. There's a lot of strategies that go under those. Way too much to list here. But you'll see those in the full document and can see that it's very extensive and it does meet a lot of the area community goals. All of that resulted in a needs plan that is unfunded, unrestricted by lack of funds. We don't even look at funding at this point. If we had all the money in the world, what would we do to meet all of those needs? So that's what this plan represents. It represents improvements to the existing service with increasing frequencies from 60 minutes, 30 minutes on Routes 2 and 3, expanding your hours of service on Route 7 to reflect the other schedules so it goes 7 to 6, expanding Saturday service to be similar to the weekend or weekday service. It also has new services identified. And those are, include both new routes to a lot of new areas. You can see there, several of them, they're listed and you can see them on the map. There's also three micro-transit or mobility on demand. And those help meet some of those first mile, last mile needs where people, there's not enough need to put in a new route, but we have need to get people to stops so they can use the service. So that's what this really is designed to help do. You call, it's kind of like having a taxi readily available to get you where you need to go quickly on short trips, so it's not overly costly. With all those in mind, we could go in more detail if you like, but I'd like to kind of go through the process, tell you how we looked at them. But we also had some alternatives that are not new services. Planning, improving your bus stop accessibility needs to start with an assessment of those stops. How are they not being accessible? And what would need to be done? And it's kind of an involved process because you got to measure cross slopes and everything because of ADA and so on. So we recommend doing that assessment, putting together a transition plan on how you can make your stops more accessible. Doing an operation analysis, and what that is, is it takes a snapshot of how you're operating, how people use the system, and then how can we improve it to make it easier for them to use it? And how do we reduce transfers, things like that? The TDP looks at how do you develop a system. Operations look at how do you make it more efficient? And then determining your fare policy. And I'm going to talk a bit more about that in the future. But that's something that you need to think about because the grant that you have to reduce your fares to make them free right now will be run out one day, and you need to be thinking about that. We also have some capital infrastructure, bus stop improvements, a major hub for Port St. Lucie. And then also some other sidewalk connections that help with accessibility, as well as a new operations, maintenance, and administration facility. So we take all that and we go through an alternative process. And this is where that Phase Two public involvement was really in full gear. And they were providing input. And as you can see through this process, we have the situation appraisal, which identifies all the needs that we have. We developed the services. And then the third column is the evaluation. And the areas that we look at to help evaluate include public outreach, our goals and objectives, how do we meet our community goals and where the communities need to go. Our transit market, where will ridership go? Where, what has the best potential for actually meeting those needs? And then productivity and efficiency. And that's how do you make the system work and be efficient and grow? And we go through a process with the public involvement activities, as well as some very analytical analysis and come up with rankings. Part of that process is weighting, go ahead, weighting those different categories. And we worked with your review committee that we have set up to come up with these weights. And you can see up here relative weight, overall category than the individual parts. And then we had scores that we gave those. And then with the weighting and the scores that we came up with through the work with the review committee, we came up with some rankings, which looked like this. We have rankings for the improvements to existing services, rankings to the new services. And we split that up and included the micro-transit because it's such a different animal than fixed route. So we did that separately so we could kind of look at it that way. So you can see we have evaluation and the rankings. And then when we got through all that process, we now have to look at funding, revenues. What do we anticipate? And what can we maybe think about for growth? And in this particular plan, it was decided that we would have two options. One would be status quo. And that's basically carrying forward with the current revenue stream and no real growth. The second would be option two is opportunity plus, is what we named it. And this has the opportunity to maybe grow by increasing the MSTU that is dedicated to public transportation. It hasn't been adjusted or increased since 2011. So we looked at maybe going up to $2 million, additional $2 billion a year to help make this a reality. And that would take the full MSTU to 0.2300. And that would be your mileage at that amount. If it did, it would start with $2 million in the first fiscal year. And then, of course, there's potential growth for that each year. And there's, we assumed a 3% growth. Additional funding will help provide adequate resources to meet those needs that we talked about, as well as some of those really high priorities that we identified through that evaluation process. And we just want to kind of give a reflection on the impact. For the average home of about $200,000 in value, it'd be about $22 annually added to that tax roll. With the two options, option one being status quo, this is what the funded plan looks like. And it's basically, the first couple of lines is maintaining the existing services. The third would be actually in the last half of the plan, the last five years, being able to implement some increased frequencies, which was the highest priority on the existing service. And that's due through some improved efficiencies. And increasing your services adds some incremental efficiencies to your system. So when we added system, some services through the FDOT grants that you got this year, we were able to also add the services for micro-transit, as well as the Fort Pierce, Port St. Lucie Express on 25th Street. So those two get added immediately. And again, in about five to six years, the added service gives you some efficiencies. Because everything does increase the same. You don't increase everything. It gives you some efficiency. So anyway, with that, we were able to implement that, the increased frequencies in the latter half. We also have in here funding for the operation analysis, the ADA assessment, some bus stop improvements at about $150,000. improvements at about $150,000, and other bus stop improvements, and then also the administrative and operations facility. But it's really only partially funded. We estimated it cost about nine, almost 10 million, but it's really only a partial funding for that. And the whole budget, it's only about, I think it's about $1 million when you add it up, that's left available for that in this plan.
Next one.
Now, this is kind of what it looks like in MAP, the status quo plan. And again, list them on the left over there, the new services and expanded services, in case you want to look at it graphically. And then, what kind of is the tell-all is that, is what's left unfunded? And this is the unfunded needs. And as you can see, it's quite a few projects. It's got two of the three existing service improvements still unfunded. It has most of the new services, other than the two new routes and the one micro transit area that we were able to fund through actually the DOT grants and so on. We do have the administration facility here partially unfunded as well. Option two is the opportunity plus, as we mentioned, includes the $2 million increase in the MSTU. And it then looks like this. It funds basically the existing services, all of the improved services to the existing system, which is the increased frequencies extended at service hours. We are able to fund all three of the micro transit services, and all but two of the new fixed route services. We just couldn't get to the two last priorities on those. And we also have all of the policy planning, capital stuff, except the administration operations facility is still only partially funded. And it does have a little bit more to it. It goes up to about $4 million instead of, actually, it was almost $2 million in the other one. But it does leave a couple of unfunded needs. Could go to the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to explain a little bit about the revenues on that, so it's kind of clear. The MSTU increase does include a 3% inflation every year. So if it was $2 million in 2020, it would grow up. So it's $23 million over the 10 years. So that helps maintain the services and the expansion. We also talked about fares, and currently you have no fares. And if you were to implement the fares back next year, when the funds, in a year or so when the funds run out from DOT, the new services that you're adding would add, estimated through the fares for them, starting about $275,000 a year. So that's something you have to think about on whether you're going to implement the fares or keep it free. And some of the things to think about, and on the next slide, I'll show you, it would be about, if you implement the fares system-wide, it'd be about 6.1 million over the 10-year plan, which is actually for the last $9 million. And if you don't, okay, what do we do with that $6 million? How do we make that up? Well, the interesting thing is that as you have no fares, your ridership has gone up fairly well, which, you know, is kind of a study in human behavior as well. But the good thing from increased ridership is your formula funds are going to go up eventually. It may take two years to catch up, but they'll be going up as well. Now, will it be an offset? Probably not, but it will be maybe 40, 30% to 40% of what you are losing from the fare box will be made up in the new formula fund, at least on the block grant side from DOT, because that's very directly tied to ridership. On the FTA side, it's a little bit more complicated formula. It should see some increase, but I don't, there's no way for me to be able to actually evaluate exactly how much that is. But I would estimate it'd go up probably another 10%, or so. So you'll make up probably about half of that, just from the formula fund. So do you want, you got that part of your valuation in the next year, when those grants run out? Do you want to keep the fares free and try to keep the ridership up and growing? Or do you want to re-implement the fares, knowing it's probably going to have an impact? And through a lot of studies, fare elasticity studies, when you implement fares, you can estimate about how much impact that would have on your ridership. And usually, it's about, for every 10%, increase. So if you're going from $0 to $1.50, that could be a big impact. But if we were to go based on what you had previously, you could estimate probably about a 30% to 40% ridership loss right away. And hopefully, you'll gain a lot of that back over time, but it may take quite a while to get there. So with that in mind, this is what the opportunity plus looks like in MAP, graphic four. You see it includes quite a bit of new colors, new services. And then, the next thing I'd like to show is, this is the unfunded needs list afterwards. And again, it only shows actually three routes. Sorry, I misspoke there, I said two, but three, plus the only partially funded admin and operations facility. So it's a big difference between the unfunded needs of the status quo versus the opportunity plus. So now, a couple of things I want to mention is, this is a plan. It's not a budget. If you approve this, you're not approving the MSTU today, obviously. You have to go through a different process for that. I also know that through your, in the process of putting it together, your budget hearings and budget discussion, you're looking at other options and other things as well. So a plan is just that, it's a plan. And every year, you do a annual progress report, and you get to adjust that plan and say why you adjusted it. In this case, if you opt to not implement the MSTU or add additional funding, then you just say, "We stayed with status quo, and that was our goal and our decision, and here's how it impacts us." We're not implementing the opportunity plus plan. So that's what you would report in your first year, or whatever it makes sense. So I just want to make sure you know, it's not a budget. You're not committing to that today. You're just committing to look at it, and this is our goal, where we'd like to go. Now you have to go through the other processes to decide if that's where you're going to With that, I really have completed the presentation. Your next step is after your adoption, which is a requirement that this board adopted as a governing board, and then sent it to DOT before September 1st. Mariah is excited to be doing this in early July, so she can get it in early and be done with it, and have plenty of time to work on budget issues and move on to other stuff. And with that, we're ready for questions, I hope.
Questions, comments from the board?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I just, I want to thank you, Mariah and Kathy, and I've told you this before, I think to have such a small staff for transit, the things that you do, you know I ride the bus, and every single time there's been an issue, and I've called staff, within an hour, our two employees are whipped to three yet. What do we have, two, three?
Three.
Okay, our three employees are out there to fix the stations and clean up whatever I have identified. And so I know that people sometimes out there, then when they watch TV, they say, "Why do you thank staff?" Well, it's their job. It is your job. But I think it's also important that when you do a good job, that you're commended for doing your job. And I know, when I can call you, and you can go wipe graffiti off, and you pay your own money to buy the erasers, that speaks volumes for you girls. So me riding the bus, I witness it every month, and what you do and your dedication. And so I want you to know that I really do appreciate you, and I think the riders on the bus as I ride, it's imperative that we keep transit alive. I have conversations with the people that ride our bus every month, and there are a lot of people that without our transit would never be able to afford to have the things they have. It is their livelihood to their physicians, and their doctors, and their jobs. And so this has become something that I have been interested in and following over the last year. I think most of you know that. And, you know, I really didn't know how important transit was until I became involved. And since I've been involved, and I hear the stories of the people that ride the bus, I know that it's a game changer, and it's a life changer for a lot of people that ride the bus. So again, I just want to personally say thank you to you girls.
This item requires a public hearing. So at this time, I will open up a public hearing on the TDP major update. Anyone wishing to address the board?
I wouldn't have y'all job for nothing in the world. I'm sitting here trying to follow that thing and figure out what he trying to explain to me, and so now I'm going to ask a couple of questions, because I don't know. But I think you did a great job, though, because everybody else satisfied. Last meeting, I watched you all, at this time, talking with two different groups about transportation. Is that what this is concerning?
No.
Darrell Drummond and, oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? I see someone else is coming up to...
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Natasha, and I actually had my first internship here at Transit. And I would very much applaud the approval of the plan that Mr. Richard Dwyer has recommended today. I have also been impacted by transportation. When I started as an intern, my degree was in emergency planning. I detested being in the transportation department, and now I consider myself a transit diva by default. Mariah has filled in Corinne's position very well, and I also work with Richard Dwyer on the side, so I know his work, and it's of integrity. We just finished a seven or eighth or ninth-month transportation study for the Agency for Persons with Disabilities. And I can't tell you how many people Medicaid affects or Medicare affects who are transportation disadvantaged, and I urge you to please. I've just recently incorporated my own nonprofit, and will be applying for grant funding to be able to help those people purchase bus passes and transportation for meeting their transportation disadvantage, transportation trip needs. So I would please urge you to go ahead and implement this plan. MSTU is vital, and I know that transportation is often an afterthought, but it does affect people. And I know because I speak to them every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to approach the board at this time? Seeing no movement, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's what I have next.
Actually, Madam Chair and Commissioners, it's...
No, I take that back. I have planning and development.
Right, this is 9C1.
Which is still under public...
Public hearing, correct.
Yes. So, Leslie? You get it?
Yes, Madam Chair.
You get it?
Yes. Got it. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I am here with our consultant for roads impact fees, Dennis Murphy with Culpeper Turpining. I'll be handing the discussion over to him for the presentation, and we will both be available for questions following his presentation.
And Chairman Commissioners, good evening. Let me get myself...
Can you get one of your microphones a little closer, if you don't mind?
Yeah. There's a slight problem of geometry here. Let me just click on it. And Chairman Commissioners, good evening. My name is Dennis Murphy. I'm with the firm of Culpeper Turpining here in Fort Pierce, and we are your consultants on the update to the county's roads impact fee ordinances in partnership with Tindale Oliver, who helped do some of the math work and carry this forward. As you know, this is a continuation of a prior meeting where this matter was discussed, and it was delayed for certain activities to take place over the period of time. And as a result of that, there have been some changes in some of the fee numbers and some of the data information that we originally presented to you, that I'm going to briefly walk through with you. The information that you have in your packets shows you the last meeting that we were at, and shows you the technical memo that was there, and the data matrix table at the large 11-by-17 sheet that shows you the various categories and all. I'm not going to go back through all of the history of impact fees. I think we all know that. I can if you want to, but I would prefer not to. And I think you would prefer me not to. But we do need to go and talk about something that changed between the last time we sat at this table and tonight. And that is basically this. The original draft of the impact fees that you have in the tech memo, documents and summary documents in front of you, were based upon the Institute of Transportation Engineers Ninth Edition. Since that time, the Tenth Edition came out. And as a result of that, there were some substantial changes in the trip length information and trip information for a number of land use categories. So we re-crunched the numbers, and there were a couple changes from what you have in the various tables. I can break it down into the individual line items, but I'm going to do the Cliffnut version of all this quickly. The impact fee proposal you have in your draft ordinance continues to break the county into four basic zones. The mainland, North Island, Fort Pierce Island, and South Island. Yeah, four basic zones. Those areas cover a wide variety of uses, and in the draft ordinance, you'll see a couple of struck-through and underlying columns in there, if I can just summarize those very quickly. The first two columns that are struck through are the existing numbers and the existing information that's found in the ordinance. That was when it was last adopted, and those numbers have changed over time as we do the annual CPI adjustments. The gray shaded column, or the brown shaded column, depending upon how your copy's printed out, that is a reference number that shows you the current impact fee through October 1 of 2018. As you know, every October 1, the county's impact fees adjust based upon the CPI, unless there is some other action taken by the board to change the fee schedule. So that gives you our benchmark. The very far right-hand column, the blue numbered and underlined, those represent the new numbers. Now, on the screens in front of you, you'll see some summary versions of the ordinance information you have in front of you. And for anybody who, when this pops up, you're going to see a couple of different things in here. I want to focus first on the residential, where it says residential option three. When we last discussed, we talked about, right now, the county has a one-size-fits-all impact fee assessment for residential development. Doesn't matter the size of the house, could be 100 square feet, could be a million square feet, it's one-size-fits-all. We came back, we heard what you said in the discussions with the board and the public, and we proposed a breakout of typical house sizes found in Singletary County. We have three basic categories of residential, single-family categories. Homes that are less than 2,400 square feet, homes that are 2,400 to 3,500 square feet, and then those that are 3,500 square feet or greater. The top two lines you see in there are tied to homes that are deed-restricted or otherwise regulated through an affordable housing incentive. So those only apply to those that are under affordable housing initiatives, and you meet other criteria that fall into them. But the bottom line is, right now, today, we're looking at a, we have a current impact fee of approximately $5,089, okay? What we're proposing to take effect on October 1 is an impact fee of approximately $5,024 for the smallest single-family range, $6,152 for the next range up, $6,171 for the final range up. And I'm going to, what is this, it's popping here? Hold on. I didn't do that. I didn't do that. It's basically these that are right here. Those are the numbers I just spoke of. Now, I said $5,089. That's the current rate. But because of scale, I'm trying to get this to a readable type document here, I've had to make some compromises in the presentation here. And as you know, and I said a moment ago, every year, the county adjusts its fees on October 1 based upon the CPI of the prior year. Now, the estimate that we're using for this purpose is that there'll be a 2% change in the impact fee, which then takes us up to a fee, if nothing changes, if nothing changed in terms of reviewing new fees, if we kept everything as it is today, single-family home impact fee for roads countywide, regardless of size, would go from roughly $5,089 to $5,169, roughly, in that general range in that area. So we'll be looking at that particular number, and I just looked here in the math and it's wrong. It should be $5,068, not $89. But you see what I'm doing in through here. What I'm showing you is that the column over here shows you the actual dollar change from 2018 to the 2019 rates would be $101. Now, let me bounce around here a little bit here. So we got, this is what it'll be on October 1 if no changes happen to anything that we do, keep status quo. This is what the recommended changes are if we adopt the revised fees based upon the updated calculations, the updated cost inputs, and the updated actions this board has taken about dividing out uses and activities. As we scroll down through here, and again, you can look at your mainland information table, it has the same information into it. It shows you that our multifamily categories have increases in certain areas, decreases in other areas, and as we move through, you find that our mobile home and other residential category, which is a catch-all, has adjustments as well. But I want to slide down to some areas that we had talked about in the past, very specifically.
If I could just ask, what are those Xs for?
They're basically telling me that that cell is empty. It doesn't need anything.
Okay.
It's just a graphic license on my part.
Thank you.
I want to slide down to retail for a moment here. There was considerable discussion early on in our process about breaking out retail into more favorable numbers, if you will, or favorable impacts for the smaller retail operator. Previously, we had a range on retail that went from 0 to 100,000, okay? Now, if you had a small business, he was getting hurt, or perceptively hurt, that the numbers were rather substantial to it. By breaking it down into some ranges, we've kind of broken it up a little bit where we can get the small guy. We're not letting the corporate, large guy, large, small guy, kind of in-between there, get through and get an advantage, and then we pick back up into where the real corporate-type activities are. The small numbers in here were intended to come in and help facilitate small business operators on standalone basis. I want to remind everybody that if a small business operator is in a shopping center, and the shopping center itself is looked at as a whole, and the developer is responsible for all of that, it's a different set of dynamics that works in that environment. But we also added something here at the bottom that previously was not in here, and something is not right there. So we, well, we'll figure, we'll get this squared away. The gas station with convenience markets, we broke those out, and something is not right there on my chart. I think it's right in the ordinance. I think this one is wrong. I apologize for that. I'll have to fix that one. But let me come back to that. Let me go to the other one that counts that we had interest in. The industrial. You'll see that the industrial numbers are not increasing that much, and I want to point out that they're not increasing that much for a specific reason. One, the trip lengths for industrial activities actually went down, trip impacts went down, therefore the costs went down. The second one is, this board made a decision several months ago that they were going to, within their authority, and we had demonstrated under the economic development programs, and it could be funded through other means, that we could come in and provide a hard cap on the rate of increase for the industrial, general industrial use at 25% of the existing rate, and then the numbers that in the, for economic development purposes and economic revenues would compensate and offset everything that worked into it. So you'll see some hard-hold numbers in that area for that. Now, I'll have to come back and figure out what happened on the gas convenience store. Yeah, I'm sorry, my chart was not updated. You have the correct information in your draft ordinance, but basically what it does is, it breaks out a gasoline convenience store into three different size categories, because as we've all have seen over the last couple of years, these gas convenience stores have changed from basically being a little shack underneath a roof to some pretty substantial type operations, and the trip characteristics and the trip impacts from them are rather substantial. Do not look at what's on the screen as being the correct number. The number that you have in your chart is the correct number to work with.
Thank you. Because I was going to say, the numbers that are showing here are not what I show on my paperwork, and I was getting ready to question that because the numbers are, they're not one of the same.
And I have to go back and find out because this chart was supposed to be one and the same. But, okay, be it as it may, the chart that counts, one that counts-
This chart is what we're looking at?
Right. The one that you're looking at is right there. So, let me do this. Boom.
Because I'm like, the numbers are not, what you're pointing is showing me is not-
Yeah, I'm sorry. I must have grabbed the wrong data table, but I thought I had it right, and I apologize for that. But the point is, is that the documents you have in front of you, the hard copies you have in front of you, and that cover all four zones, are the correct numbers, and it shows what we're looking at in here. Do you have the front page of that? So when it comes back then to the single-family home environment, go back to the first one there. You see that the number was 515, 6129, and 6222. Those all matched into, the 5068 you see in the gray column, that is the current rate. The number I had in there previously, the 5169, that is the change that will take place if the 2% CPI adjustment kicks in on October 1. The recommendation that that not kick in, be allowed to kick in, and instead, you go to the revised impact fee numbers here, since they are based on the most current and available data for you. We've talked in the past about the impacts of the impact fee changes on various development activities throughout the community, and it ranges widely. You know, there are going to be some impacts, and there will be, some will be major, some will be minor. We talk about, do we expect it to have any major effect? I'm not going to say one of any, but any major effect on residential permitting, because keep in mind, residential permitting is the cash cow for the county's impact fee program. It's not non-residential, it is residential. No, I don't think there's going to be any. The two heavy areas for permitting right now are in the Port St. Lucie area, and right on the cusp would be the Jenkins Road Corridor here in Fort Pierce. If those projects, I mean, we've seen all the sales, the coming soon signs and that kind of stuff, so there'll be some things happening there. Most of those projects, and I call them projects because they are, have impact fee credits where they already contributed to various transportation improvement projects, and they're not actually paying the impact fee directly. They're paying it indirectly through the provision of transportation improvements benefiting their project and the other surrounding areas. Where frankly, the majority of the impact fee hit comes from is in the scattered house. That's where the biggest hit is at the moment, and there's not a lot that's going to change that. Now, in your draft ordinance, you also have some other text changes that we proposed in there. Basically, some cleanup language based upon statute changes that took place over the past year. And finally, we had at the very end of the document, we had the, and Mr. McIntyre's going to comment on something here in a moment, we had the effects, the effective date of the ordinance itself. The ordinance is targeted right now to be effective October 1, typically 90 days out. Dan will comment on that in a moment, but also at the end of the document, you'll see there's a specific action and recognition that we need from the county commission that says that the adoption of this ordinance, in essence, stays or delays any CPI adjustment for this calendar year for the road impact fees, portion of things. CPI process would kick in next year for the fees, so there will not be a double change in fees, assuming you adopt the fees as they are put forth. So with that, questions?
Did Mr. McIntyre have to-
Oh, Dan.
Is he saying something?
Right. Commissioners, the state law that was adopted several years ago on impact fees contains a provision that says that when you adopt a fee or an increase in a fee, the effective date has to be at least 90 days from the notice of the adoption. Now, if you think about that, October 1, and it's July 2, we're really right at that date. And what I would suggest we do in an abundance of caution is make the effective date no earlier than November 1. I don't want to get into an argument about whether the 90 days runs on the date. Actually, what we have to do with any ordinance is we have to submit it to the Secretary of State. Every ordinance that we do has to go there. That usually takes about 10 days to do that. Normally, our ordinances are effective upon filing with the Secretary of State. We have to make this one perspective. So I'm just suggesting that we make it no earlier than November 1. You can certainly make it later than, you could do January or December, whatever you want to do. October 1 is just, in my opinion, is just too edgy. I just think it would be better to be more conservative on this issue. And so I'm suggesting, again, if you're comfortable with the ordinance in adopting it, that you at least make it no earlier than November 1 of 2019.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy, Leslie, this board was very clear in how we wanted to approach impact fees. We know that impact fees are a challenge, but they're also supportive of development. And what we did months ago was to direct, to have a breakout for the smaller homes so that we could provide workforce housing. You've done that clearly, and some of the areas of the reductions, I think, are very favorable in that regard, including the multifamily component. The other is, and I heard one of my commissioners up here, who is very supportive of small business, argue very clearly that that needed to be taken into account as well, and you've done that. The areas that we're seeing, you talked about the gas stations and convenience stores. They're actually almost malls now. So from that standpoint, they're not just gas stations, they're not just general convenience stores. They are basically a place to go, and so it is important that those will have the number of trips to be reflected in the impact fees, because that's where all the trips are going to be gone to. We addressed the industrial, the warehousing, the intermodal-type distribution things that we have been, as a group and many boards, has been very supportive of moving and providing an opportunity for those types of businesses to come here. We have been supportive of the Economic Development Council for manufacturing, distribution, those which will come to and around the airport, and that which we have supported in Port St. Lucie. So these are reflective of those conditions. I cannot see an area here that is out of line with what we gave you as direction. I have heard from some other entities in the community that have looked at this and been very favorable, and those would include some developers, some real estate individuals. And so I'm encouraged at the work that has been done here. I'm appreciative of the extra work, and I'm glad that we actually sent you back to take a look at this stuff, because I think what I heard from each of my colleagues up here was, we gave clear direction, and I think you've accomplished that. That's what I see.
Madam Chair. I agree with you for the most part, Commissioner Zdowski, but I disagree with the part on the residential end of it. So I'm going by now, Mr. Murphy, the numbers that I'm seeing here. And so for me, when I look at, you know that I'm not a proponent of impact fees to begin with, but I understand that they're there. So when I look at a 2,400-square-foot house, which is a pretty much standard home for middle-income family, your low-income families are going to do your smaller homes, your middle-income families are going to do about a 2,400-square-foot house, and a lot of them are at the age now that they're inheriting the land from their parents because they're pioneer families and everything. This is a lot of money for them to go into to try to build a home. And that, to me, when I look at this, is what was targeted. I'm not talking to you personally, I'm just saying as general numbers. And so where it was $4,988, which is what I'm seeing on this sheet from 2018, to what you're wanting to charge now, it's going to go up $1,234. Are my numbers correct?
From 28, from the original 4,000 number was the 2017-18 fiscal year number.
And now it's going to go to 6,000?
And now it's going to be 6,129.
So that's over $1,000 increase in impact fees. And so when you have a middle-income family, a young family in their 30s trying to start out in a home, and they're trying to build a house and they're not low-income, both husband and wife are working, and they want to go in and try to build a home that they're going to live in for a lifetime because it's family land, they're the ones that's going to be targeted and penalized. The low-income homes are not generally built by an individual. They're built by a developer. A developer goes in there, takes the impact fees, wraps it into the price of the house, it's financed by the bank, and the person buying the house doesn't even really understand what an impact fee is. So they aren't the ones taking their direct hit. The way I see this is, the person that's going to be penalized overall is the middle-income gentleman out there trying to make a living for his family, trying to build a home as an owner-builder, and he's the one taking the biggest hit. So I'm there almost. I agree with Commissioner Zdowski. You did address a lot of things, and I think that a lot of work went into this, but I'm still not comfortable with this number, especially when it's going up. So I think if we can collaboratively as a board figure out some way to not penalize the middle-income working man that's wanting to build a 2,000-to-2,400-square-foot home, I think we can be there. I don't know if that's going to be, I know there's been some conversation like under-air versus under-roof, that then if you build a 3,000-square-foot house, if a 1,000-square-foot is carport or something, I don't know. I don't know what the intent is at this point, but I'm still, I will not support this tonight as much as it's went down on a lot of things. I still can't support where we are with the residential, where it's not giving the middle-income family the capabilities to go out and get a loan from the bank and try to have their dream of building a house. So I think if we can collaboratively figure out a way to figure out something, I'm there.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Can I follow up on your comments, Commissioner Townsend? Because you hit on something that I've questioned and had discussions with the staff on, and I'm just going to look at it from a different perspective, and I appreciate what you've said. But to me, it was also in my conversations with both this morning and earlier, it was on the definition of square footage and what that was. Because if you look at, and I'll use your scenario of single-family homes being built by an owner or, you know, through a contractor, if you will, but not as part of a development. The newer style homes that you're looking at now, especially in Florida, are coming in with the big porches, the under-roof, under-roof, if you will, porch in the back for a gar, not a garden, outdoor kitchen and so forth. So I'm right there with you on that perspective of it. But in our conversations, what I'd like to get to is, I look at this, if you check the CPI proposed numbers that you just gave, Dennis, in October 1. By not adopting this by, well, now, November 1, there's an opportunity for a lot of people to benefit by the reduction that was there. So I'm like, I'm hard-pressed, I want those to be there, but at the same time, I want the definition of square footage, because it's administratively decided. So I'll offer a compromise to move forward with it, but instead, direct staff, because my understanding is, and both you can correct me if I'm wrong, is it actually goes under the administrative procedurals manual, that we could actually come in with verbiage- the administrative procedurals manual, that we could actually come in with verbiage that would then direct not just staff now, but staff down the road after we're long gone and many, the chain, turnovers that happen, that there is a clear definition of what that square footage entails. Whether it's the under-air or it's-
The lanai's and the summer kitchens and stuff.
Exactly. It's because I've been back and forth on that same issue, knowing that a lot of the homes being built now are using large porches and so forth. And it's counted in the square footage. So is, would that be something that the staff could do? Because you could pass this if we so desired tonight, but yet still come back under that administrative manual and make any adjustments through that, bring language maybe in informal. I have a feeling you're going to find out you should be rewriting that entire manual.
Right.
But that's for that later discussion.
Well, and I, I think it's, it's worth bringing this before the board under perhaps a resolution, bring the administrative manual back to the board. If we are, if we're changing the way that we're calculating impact fees, especially for single-family homes, and as Mr. Murphy has, has indicated, that, that kind of impact fee is really where we get our impact fees, is for single-family homes. And so what we can do is we can go back into that administrative manual, determine, you know, what changes need to be made based on this. So if somebody has a large porch that they eventually want to close in, how will that be calculated at that time of building permit? And then we can propose that to the board. And if there are any concerns at that time, then we can, we can make those changes.
Would there be board support to look at that?
As a separate item.
As a separate, not, not for, but I mean, direction to be given to staff, no matter what the outcome is.
The only concern I have about, you know, that idea is when we talk about either under-air, we talk about the porches and the lanai's and so on and so forth. What if a, what if a house comes in with a four-car garage? Is a four-car garage, meaning we're, we're talking about road impact fees. So if they have a four-car garage, they're obviously going to have much more impact from the vehicle miles traveled or that, that particular scenario. So that's why I'm, we're doing it on the fly, but if that's the case, we should have that conversation in informal and, and understand what that ultimately will be.
And that's what I was asking. Yeah. That's why I was, not to do it on the fly tonight. There still needs to be an understanding of what would that entail, and that's almost a conversation. But again, I think going back to Commissioner Townsend's comments, along with some questions I've had on it, that definition of what is considered square footage. I mean, if I go look at a set of house plans, it's going to read 5,000, say 2,500 square feet under roof. But then it's broke out for porches and garages separate. So if I'm looking to do it, you know, which number am I using when I come in to calculate the impact fees if I'm trying to run a budget prior to applying?
Commissioner Zdowski, the other thing is, I think if somebody's going to have a, and I'm not saying overall, I'm just saying the average person, if they're going to have a four-car garage and four cars in it, they're going to be building a 4,000 or 5,000 square foot home. And that's not what I'm looking at.
I'm just throwing out the idea that-
Yeah, no, and I, and I understand that. Because there's people-
We need to make it comprehensive, you know, so.
But, but for me, I just want to protect the working man that wants to live the dream to go out there and build the house. And an average house for a family, that they want to go out there, is about 2,000 square feet. And so again, you know, if you're a developer and you're building, you're going to put the impact fees in there, it's not going to affect you, you're passing it through to the homeowner, and those homeowners don't even realize what's being done. But the average working man that's going to go get a loan from the bank and build their dream house is the one that's being affected by these numbers. And so for me, I, I, I can't agree to this.
Okay, well.
But I, but I'm, I am in agreement with you, Commissioner Hutchinson, too. Because you're, you're correct. A lot of times, it's a 6,000 square foot home, but you've got the porches and lanai's and the summer kitchens, you've got the garage area that takes it to that when it's really only a 2,000 square foot house. So I, I agree, and I'm open to having that conversation.
Madam Chair, could we pass this tonight with a, some kind of understanding that we'll come back to get a clear and definitive definition of what, how many square feet under roof, is it under air, and everything that Commissioner Townsend and Hutchinson just alluded to?
Sure. Because remember, we've got to pass it prospectively. So if you take my suggestion of November 1st or even after that, you've got a lot, you've got 90-plus days, almost 120, to get your informal meeting and look at the definitions. And if you're not happy with how that works, three or more of you, we can just come back to the ordinance and advertise it and modify it or rescind it, I guess, if that's what you want to do. But yes, so the answer is you have time, because we're not making this effective until at least November 1st, if you take my recommendation. You certainly could make it later if you wanted to as well.
And if, and if we didn't do this and we voted it down, then all the deductions would not go into effect? Is that correct?
That's right.
It would just be the standard CP, just the standard CPI in October.
So the fees would only go up, there would be none that come down?
Which is why I'm so concerned about, that's why I had my comments earlier on. And if it's, if it's merely about a definition, I'm, I'm in favor of moving this forward with the indication that it does not take effect before November 1st with an adjustment to the, what manual, what's called?
Administrative procedural manual.
So that could be a motion if somebody heard that.
Madam Chair, I have another question real quick. Leslie?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Ms. Olson, I need to be better at this. Right now, is it broke down, broken down, or is it all residential is $4,988?
That's correct. That is the current adopted.
Okay, so in looking at the new fee, I would rather let it be, this is good, but keep everything at what it was at the 4,988, not even break it out into these. Because then everybody wanting to build a house is being treated fairly, one in the same, and it's the same fee for a residential home.
Wait, wait, you're, you're going against what we argued to to get the different square footage?
No, what I'm saying is, when you look at 4,988 and you look at a $6,000, $222 impact fee, and people that are building smaller homes are going to get a reduction of over $1,500, you're penalizing the average working man. So instead of increasing that and lowering it and giving even more tax credits to the smaller house-
Well, it's not tax, it's a fee for the impact fee.
Well, the fee, the impact fee, okay. I know that we had that conversation, but rather than penalizing somebody wanting to build a 2,000 square foot home or larger, what, at the most, we should leave it the same at the 4,988.
Commissioner, I thought, and, and actually, you argued the opposite the last time.
No, I didn't argue the opposite of the small houses, I argued the opposite of the square foot.
We were talking about incentivizing the smaller homes, if you recall. So it's not about, it's not about penalize one or the other, it was to find a, a way to incentivize the smaller home. That way, those who would choose, they would get a reduction so they could afford it. But we incentivize it by actually reducing the cost for those smaller homes.
But Commissioner Zdowski, my comment back then was also on an average 2,000 square foot home, not your 1,000 or 1,500 or 1,200. It was your average 2,000 square foot home, which is where your average middle-income family is going to live. That's where I was back then, if I remember correctly. I don't think it was on the small 1,000 square foot homes.
The argument was to reduce and create multiple levels for square footage instead of having one size fits all. So we, so they did that, that's, that's why, that's why I'm confused.
I'm not saying that they didn't do what was asked of them, because we all had different requests. I just think it's unfair to penalize somebody because they want to build a bigger home.
I would only, I would only, at this point, because I'll just use my district as an example. Before impact fees, before planning and development rules went in place, the fees did not include covering road impact fees or other impact fees. Today, I just spent time in Harmony Heights, and I have a community that still has largely unimproved roads, unimproved drainage, unimproved elements, and others that sit up here have dirt roads still, too. And it's largely because we hadn't charged for or created a funding source to be able to cover the impacts of those houses as they were built. So, so I don't want to go backwards in, in, in repeating the sins of the past. Unfortunately, today, we are actually having to use general fund dollars to, to do just that, to actually build roads and drainage and sidewalks and implement a half-cent sales tax to, to support and pay for those things. And so development, everybody loves development because it grows your community, it grows your economic base. But the problem is, if it doesn't pay for itself to some level, and quite frankly, roads are a major part of being able to develop. We see what's happening in the North County now, you know, different areas of, of roads that are dirt roads, where development wants to come. So we can't come out of general fund to pay for those things. My goal and my thought is, development should pay for itself to some level, and it'll never pay for it 100% because we just know it doesn't. But, you know.
But Commissioner Zdowski, the areas you're referencing has actually been annexed into the city of Fort Pierce. And at that time, the city of Fort Pierce should have taken over their roads, and they should pay for their own roads.
That's incorrect. Harmony Heights is not in Fort Pierce.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, a lot of your area is in the city of Fort Pierce, and they were annexed in, and we are still maintaining their roads. So that's another whole conversation. But when you go out west to my ag guys, and they are out there living on the land, and like Commissioner Hutchinson has, has referenced, a lot of those people have porches and barns and stuff, and they are going to build a 2,000 square foot house. They're not going to build a 1,000 square foot house. And so that's what I'm referencing at this point in time. Because I know the area that you are, it is a smaller house. But an average house and an average square home in Liquid Park is about 1,800 square feet. An average condominium over on the beach is about 1,800 square feet. An average home out in the ag land is 2,000 and up. And I just don't think that they should be penalized. So I, again, I'm okay with going back to having conversation, but I also believe that when a city wants to annex things in, they need to take over their roads and take care of their own roads that they want the taxes on.
And I agree with that, but that's not the case in this, Paradise Park has not been annexed. They're challenging to do that. Harmony Heights has not been annexed. Sunland Gardens has not been annexed. Harmony Heights has not been annexed. So there are a lot of other areas that have not been annexed. Sheridan Plaza has roads, it has not been annexed. So those are different areas. But, but I just want to point out, you made, you made a statement that I want to take you back to. It's those who live in the ag lands that are affected. These impact fees are focused on areas of growth. And so if you're building a community that's 2,000 units or 800 units or 500 units, that's where the, those revenues will come from. It's not going to be the one or two or 10 or 12 or even 50 of the individuals who may be in agricultural communities. It's going to be the 5,000 or the 10,000 or the 25,000. Now, somebody referenced tonight, the area off of Endrio, looking to build 2,500 homes. This is what that's targeting.
Right.
It's, it's, that's a, your subset is very small by comparison of the 600 square miles that which we are, St. Lucie County. So I understand what you're trying to accomplish, but we're, we're, we're living with the sins of the past.
We have to find a way to help everybody, though.
I agree. And that's what all these reductions are about.
And, and they are, but I think we need to go back to what Commissioner Hutchinson said and look at the square footage under roof, and if it's not under air, then that shouldn't be a part of the tax.
And I'm okay with that, but we talked about that, and that's, that's how I started to focus and straight, to start a motion, to say, accept this as it is because we're getting all the reductions, but come back within the next 90 days and discuss the, the manual in which to address the issue of under-air.
And dumb, I don't want, I don't want the public to misunderstand me. Your area deserves roads, they do, and it is a congested area, and they-
But I'm not even talking, I'm, I'm talking about this.
So we need to, I know, we need to go back and do all that. So as long as we can go back and have that conversation before this actually gets sent in.
I think is that, if that's put in motion form.
That was what the motion ran.
But, right. And, and so, to be clear, and so the public understands, this isn't, this impact fee is not about taking care of the sins of the past, because we can't use impact fees that are coming to pay for those. Do I have, is that, is that right? So that, those are for the future impacts that are coming at the time. So, so that's why we're going to half-cent sales tax, that's why we're going to general fund dollars and revenue to do the sins of the past. So that, I want to make that very clear. So this is about the future. So thank you for the debate, I appreciate it.
Can we get that in a motion form?
I think I started it out.
It did.
Would you like to finish it?
We have to have a public hearing, though, right? I mean-
Yes. Of course, Dan.
Okay. So after all that, this item does require a public hearing. So I will open up the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the commission, please come forward. And seeing no movement, now we can come back to the board.
Okay. What's the name of the manual again?
Administrative procedurals.
The motion would be, I would think, is that you move the adoption of the ordinance, make it effective no earlier than November the 1st, with a strong direction to staff to agenda a discussion of the administrative manual on road impact fees for an informal meeting that would discuss the square footage allocation in residential homes, with the understanding that the board, if the board's uncomfortable with that, at the end of the day, you, you can move forward and rescind the ordinance or modify it. That would be something along the lines of, I've heard you-
That's exactly what I said, except for the last, except for the last sentence, though. That is my motion.
So do I have a second to that motion?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Staff, you understand the direction?
We will bring a resolution back to you prior to November 1st.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we will go on to the regular agenda. Mr. Attorney, first item is Port of Fort Pierce conceptual site plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item will be presented really by, initially by Property Acquisition, Joanne Riley, but then I, her intention is to turn it over to Port and Airport Director Stan Payne. This relates to the Port of Fort Pierce conceptual site plan submitted by Director Fort Pierce pursuant to their lease agreement. We have 20 days to review it. That 20 days would fall before the board's next meeting. So we're simply giving the board the opportunity to look at it, ask any questions if you have any, or make any comments. But again, Ms. Riley will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, Joanne Riley, Property Acquisition Manager. Item 10A1 is relative to the Port of Fort Pierce. On April the 16th of 2019, the board and Director Fort Pierce LLC entered into a lease and franchise agreement for the development and the operation of what was formerly known as the Indian River Terminal. On June 14th of 2019, county staff received a conceptual site plan pursuant to Section 4.1F of the agreement. The county, as Mr. McIntyre stated, has 20 days after receipt to review and provide any objections. This period of 20 days will expire on July the 4th. Staff would recommend that the board review and comment on the conceptual plan. And at this time, I'd like to turn the item over to Stan Payne, the Executive Director of the Aaron Seaport. He'll make a brief presentation, and we'll both be available to answer any questions that you might have.
Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Madam Chair, Mr. Stan, before you do, can we have IT take Outlook off of here? Because it, it keeps popping up and it's, it's blocking everything on our screens. It just keeps saying Outlook is doing something. So I don't know if Outlook is open underneath that somewhere or-
I just got rid of it off of mine.
That's what I'm saying, it just keeps doing it, it's just been 100th time tonight, so. Sorry, Madam Chair, I just, it's making me crazy.
It's not a long word. I said, I think I helped with that, didn't I? Make you crazy?
You always do. Well, I appreciate it.
It's not here.
It's gone now, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Payne.
So this is, I'm looking at the August 22nd, 2018 submittal of Director, and that was in the procurement process. And things have changed since then. Things have changed, quite frankly, over the last two days, over the last week, over the last couple of weeks. But I can say that they've changed for the better, which is interesting. This is a process, as Director has gone through the concept, refined it, measured it, done the geometries of taking the ships with the shiplift off onto the land. But the biggest thing is that when we started the negotiations with Director, the idea was the first year was going to be devoted to- was the first year was going to be devoted to construction. And so we were going to have literally a period of an entire year where the terminal was going to be not particularly functional, and you were not going to see the job growth that we talked about. This concept plan, the newest one, once again, this is, this is very new, is going to change that, and that's for the better. Because instead of moving forward exclusively with the shiplift, and that was the original plan, the new plan is to bring a dry dock in as early as this fall, to legitimately start those operations while the shiplift is being designed and the piers are being constructed, and then based on the market later on in the year, likely toward the spring, should the market warrant it, to bring in an even bigger ship of dry dock. So now, instead of a dry dock and a shiplift, waiting a year for the shiplift, the idea is to bring in the dry dock this fall, a small one, small, 3,400 tons. And then later on, perhaps in the spring, perhaps in this time next year, bring in a second dry dock of about 5,000 tons. And so what that's going to do is, it's frankly, going to spur job creation that much quicker. We're, I think it's safe to say that county staff, along with Director, we are ready to emerge from the inspection process that we've been undergoing for the last 75 days. Frankly, there have been no surprises. We're ready to address those issues. But I think we're all ready to move forward. The packing house, that demolition started in earnest this morning, so I anticipate that's going to be down hopefully within 30 to 45 days, so we'll have that done. We're working with the state in arranging now with Director how the grant processes work and how we can work with them to help them do some of these, make some of these improvements that they need to. Director has vessels ready to come now and in this fall. This is just a question of them giving the go-ahead to do it. So everyone is ready, chomping at the bit to get this done. This is a concept, not cast in stone, but the first step in this is going to be to start the job creation process as quickly as possible, and that means to bring a dry dock in. John Koenig is here from Director. We are both here to ask, answer questions if you have those. It's positive, this is a much more comprehensive plan than the one presented August 22nd, with the addition of the second dry dock. There's still the commitment to the shiplift, still the commitment to the size of the shiplift. This is to maximize the utilization of the terminal.
Any questions, comments?
Just refresh my memory, if you could, Mr. Payne. Have we applied for any grants and have we received any grants?
We have, we've applied for grants. We just received one, as a matter of fact, yesterday, a little over $300,000. The way the state system works is for rehabilitation of piers, those grants can be applied, 75-25 state and local money. Director would be providing the local money. There's also some extra money that was left over from some previous grants. There may be some new allocations in August, and then along the way, so.
What you're saying is, we got a $300,000 grant in the last few days?
We have three, we got $300,000, $313,000 yesterday.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? So let me take the opportunity, Stan, to say that I'm excited that we continue to better the plan. I know that we're doing, and Director is doing a lot to do everything that we have put together. I have no doubt, but I just want to reiterate that as much as I am interested in seeing ships, and I think in a private conversation at one point, I said, yeah, I want them in 30 days. I'm going to reiterate that, as excited as I am, once again, I want it done right. So, and I believe that that's the path we are on. So that's, you know, again, I just want people to know that we are not trying to be, to bring ships in just to show, but that we are working hard, we are doing it right, and this is going to be a world-class operation, so.
I appreciate that. I, in the conversation I had with John today, talking about this and really understanding the philosophy, I mentioned him, I said, "Don't be bringing a rusty old dry dock in here." And he just laughed, and he said, "Our customers wouldn't permit it," which is exactly what I wanted to hear.
Thank you for that. So we do need to have a motion to accept the new conceptual plan? Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favors?
Aye.
Thank you again, Mr. Payne. Thank you again, Director. Okay, our next item is South Florida Water Management District Permit for Sunbreak Farms' Composting Facility. This is a petition to intervene. Mr. McIntyre, if you'll take that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, the board has taken a very strong stance in trying to protect the water quality in the lagoon. They've adopted ordinances regulating composting. They've directed staff and consultants to take a hard look at the Sunbreak Farms' composting facility application with the Water Management District, specifically CDM Camp Dresser and McKee have, at the county's request, reviewed the application. They provided a number of detailed comments to the district, one of which was that there was no monitoring plan provided by Sunbreak to determine the effect of their operation on the water quality in the lagoon. The district took that comment and addressed it with Sunbreak. Sunbreak's decision was not to provide the monitoring plan as requested by the district. As a result, the district issued a letter in May of this year notifying Sunbreak that the Water Management District intended to deny Sunbreak's application. Sunbreak decided to challenge that in an administrative hearing, and they filed a formal petition to do that. The county, as I indicated, is very interested in this whole process because of the potential impact on the lagoon. We had some options. Unfortunately, they were fairly time-constrained, and we took a break to, because of schedules, and so we didn't have a meeting in the timeframe. So what I did on my own, and I'll take responsibility for it, but the board has the ability to undo this, is I authorized our special counsel to file a petition to intervene. We have the ability to intervene, and what that means is we come in on the side of the district, but we take the case as we find it. We only take it as the issues are. We are not a party to it. We're intervening, but we have the right to participate in the proceedings. As a matter of fact, we've assisted Indian River County, who has also intervened, and the St. John's Water Management District, which is also affected, has decided to intervene, all on behalf of the district. We have the ability now to, to help the district. Our intentions are to utilize CDM to continue to assist in that role. So a lot of my memo is really just, we had options, but we've, I've decided to go ahead and, and protect the board's interest. And the reason for that is, if we had missed the deadline, you don't have, you miss the option. By going ahead and getting the deadline, you can always decide you don't want to do it. It is just a safer place for the board to be. Staff recommends that, given the potential for, for the Sunbreak project to negatively impact the water quality in the lagoon, we recommend that you give after-the-fact permission for the county to file the petition to intervene, and Mr. D., our special counsel, concurs with that recommendation.
Do you need a motion or a consensus?
A motion would be appropriate, because we are, we actually did file the petition.
Any questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I just want to say that, you know, this board's been very strong on its efforts to protect the Indian River Lagoon, our waterways, and our citizens. This is a continuing process that we have undertaken, and I would be proud to take the motion to move this forward and motion to approve.
Second. The motion and the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we move forward. And then the next is the Solid Waste Preliminary Assessment Resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri will be handling this item.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. What you have before you is the Solid Waste Preliminary Assessment Resolution. Pursuant to Chapter 38 of our Code of Compiled Laws, the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners has the authority to impose annual assessments for solid waste, the garbage and recycling collection, disposal of administrative fees, facilities and programs against certain property within St. Lucie County. The board initially levied reoccurring annual assessments on residential property within the county's solid waste urban service area for the purpose of including solid waste fees on the property tax bills on September 14th, 2004. The attached Solid Waste Preliminary Assessment Resolution initiates the process required to impose the solid waste assessment for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2019, at a rate of $276.14 per dwelling unit. The resolution also provides that the maximum rate that can be charged in the future fiscal years without further notice is $280 per dwelling unit. It directs the county administrator to prepare preliminary assessment rule for said fiscal year to be collected on the 2019 property tax bill, and establish a public hearing on the assessment to be held on September 3rd, 2019, at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter, may be heard. At the public hearing, the board may vote to assess a lower rate of assessment for the fiscal year. And staff is recommending that the board adopt the Solid Waste Preliminary Assessment Resolution and authorize the chair to sign the resolution as drafted by the county attorney's
And again, Madam Chair, the effect of this is really, it's like a permission to advertise. Basically, you're advertising this. The hearing will be held September 3rd. At that time, you can't go higher, but you can go lower if that's what you choose. So that's the process that the state provides for this. This is something we do every year. We adopt the preliminary resolution every year, and then we do a final hearing. So the plan is to advertise this and hold the hearing, I believe, at September the 3rd.
Yes.
That's at 6:00 PM. Staff recommends approval.
Questions, comments, motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we go on to announcements at this point, and before you start, Mr. Tipton, I want to say that, as it was noted in the very beginning of the meeting, Independence Day is Thursday, 4th of July, fireworks, barbecues, people out in boats. I just want to say, everybody have a good Fourth, but please be safe, be cognizant of the roads and our waterways. Mr. Tipton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a reminder, too, on July 4th, our offices will be closed. We will be open on July 5th. I did run into a contractor the other day who was asking me that, and I said, "Nope, we'll be open July 5th." Also, we are in, as we're in July, it's hurricane season, which runs June 1st through November 30th, and we just urge all residents to make sure you've got a plan and make sure you're restocking your hurricane kits. If you need to pre-register for medical special needs shelter or for a pet-friendly shelter, please do so by contacting stlucie.gov/eoc. And lastly, two other items. Our budget workshops are next week, July 8th, 9th, and 10th. They're starting at 9:00 AM. And the next board regular meeting will be Tuesday, July 16th. That's a morning meeting, started at 9:00 AM.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, can I just add a little point to what you just said about the 4th of July? There are a lot of active, formerly active veterans who are home, who spend some time in active duty, and for those of you who are going to have fireworks and firecrackers and stuff, just be cognizant of the individuals in your community who may be veterans who have been in active service. It's, it's an issue that comes up each and every year, even during New Year's. So I'm just asking the residents and the community to be respectful and, and pay attention that former active-duty veterans, military, may be more sensitive than, than others.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? Meeting adjourned.